Good afternoon, everybody. We're going to call to order the Ford County Commission meeting for May 1st, 2023. This meeting number will be 2023-19. And we will start with a prayer and a pledge of allegiance. I believe our pastor that was supposed to lead us in prayer here today is no show. So I will muddle through and lead us the best that I can. Heavenly Father, we want to thank you for this day. Thank you for your continued blessings on Ford County and our region. Thank you especially, especially for the gift of rain that we received over this last week. Ask that you will continue to bless us in that way. Ask that you bless everybody here today. Thank you for their presence and for their interest in the governance of our county. I ask that you bless the commissioners here today with clarity of thought and clearness Ask that you guide us in our, in our decisions and that we are able to move this meeting forward to your glory in Jesus' name and the grace.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
To start the meeting today, I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda on a couple of different items. Number one, we have unfinished business. We have planning, zoning, environmental health items. And that is on our agenda as an action item today. I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda. That is a discussion item today only. That is my, that is my motion on that. I'll second that. Motion seconded and approved for discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Next, we need to, I need to make a motion to add an agenda item under the administrator's report. And we'll drop that in after number seven, I suppose. Is that considered? Make a motion to add an agenda item after number seven on the administrator's report for the Ford County Fire EMS. Motion seconded and approved for discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Let's start with our consent agenda. We have meeting minutes for meeting 2023, 16 and 17. We have a credit card statement. We have additions and abatements. And then we have a couple of proclamations, one for National Train Day and National Travel and Tourism Week. Mr. Chairman, we'll go through the additions and abatements, but this is real. It's about a year today.
We just have a couple. We have one that was exempt for me, so we had to go on from the property a little bit. And everyone, we help the person with property issues.
Very small for today.
Yes, it was great. I'm not going to let it off.
Any questions, gentlemen? Thank you, Patty. Okay, I'll read our proclamations here. National Train Day proclamation, federal, whereas federal and state transportation departments have made expansion of high-speed intercity passenger rail a top priority in building 21st century national infrastructure. And whereas a healthy freight passenger rail network is essential to keeping American economy moving efficiently, whereas Dodge City has benefited from train service on Amtrak Southwest Chief Route, whereas Amtrak continues to work with states on the development of the next generation of high-speed intercity passenger rail trains, which will create good jobs in the United States by resurrecting the domestic manufacturing base. And whereas during fiscal year 2022, October 21 to September 22, Amtrak welcomed aboard more than 22.9 million passengers. Whereas 3,519 passengers boarded or dis- disbarred Amtrak trains in Dodge City during fiscal year 22. Now therefore, I shall pass it, Chairman of the Ford County Commission, due here by proclaim May 13th, 2023, as National Train Day. And witness there, I have here and to set my hand this first day of May 2023. In the National Travel and Tourism Week, whereas travel has a positive effect on Ford County and the state of Kansas, economic prosperity. And whereas the travel industry fuels every industry and will continue to be an essential part of Ford County's economy development workforce. Whereas tourism is an economic driver, business recruitment tool, building blocks of state and community pride for Ford County. Whereas travel and, whereas travel too and throughout Kansas provides significant annual economic benefits for the state, generating more than 11.2 billion indirect and indirect business sales, including 7 billion spent directly by travelers. And whereas by key indicators from the 2021 economic impact of tourism in Ford County report show that leaders in the community are su- are supporting the importance, do support the importance, growth of tourism throughout Ford County with visitor spending 151 million in Ford County, which ranks ninth among all counties in the state. Whereas travel in Ford County generated $13.9 million accruing to state public taxes with the largest two categories of spending being recreation at 41.7 million and food and beverages at 35.1 million here in Ford County. And whereas the travel industry is the fourth largest employer in Ford County, supporting 1,499 jobs and resulting in $52 million in wages and benefits. Whereas the travel industry in the heart, is heartbeat of our community and business, inviting visitors from around the globe to enjoy the experiences that only Ford County can offer. Whereas welcoming visitors from here and far has always been and always will be the enduring spirit of the travel industry in Kansas. Now therefore, I shall pass it, Chairman of the Ford County Commission, due here by proclaim May 7th to 13th, to 2023, as National Travel and Tourism Week. Be it further resolved that the city of Dodge City, with the aid of the Convention and Bureaus, Visitor Bureau, will hold, will hold a reception on May 9th from 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. at the Boot Hill Museum with complimentary historic trolley tours on that day at 10:30 a.m. and 1:30 p.m. in an emergency travel and tourism. Encourage the citizens to join me in this special tour with appropriate events and activities. And witness there, I have here and to set my hand this first day of May 2023. Make a motion to approve the consent agenda presented.
Aye, seconded.
Motion seconded and approved for discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
I believe there's a group here from the city of tourism that actually, I thought there was a box. Peak that in the hallway or something. You want to come up and talk about various things? Sorry, I didn't realize you were back there.
No, it's okay. Some.
I know. Should have had you up here reading.
That's okay. Some people love reading, some people don't. So we do have some little thank yous for you all with the economic impact report. And I'm Megan Welsh, the Director of the Convention and Visitor Bureau here in Dodge City. And so we thank you all for the support that you've provided us over the years with travel and tourism. We are excited to be ninth again amongst all 105 counties in the state in regards to the economic impact that tourism has. So we actually led the economic recovery in the state. After the pandemic, we were at 112% pre, from the pre-pandemic numbers, where the state of Kansas was only at 95% recovered. So we were leading the way. There are a couple of events in your cups that we'll be hosting during National Travel and Tourism Week, so please come out and enjoy us. And then we also have a special announcement with some murals that will be going on in the downtown district. So we'll have three ribbon cutting simultaneously or back-to-back on Tuesday starting at 3:30. So there's some beautiful murals and artwork that will be taking place during that, or ribbon cutting taking place during that week. So thank you all for having us.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Anybody else on that? Next on the agenda, we have approval for claims for payment in the amount of $639,501.06.
To make a motion, we have first, please.
I'll second that. Motion seconded and approved for discussion. Have you got anything?
Let me answer.
No further discussion, I'll call a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we have open public comment, which we limit to five minutes per individual and 15 minutes per topic. The final action to be deferred until the next county commissioner unless an emergency situation exists. Do you have anybody for open public comment today?
If you would allow me.
Please.
And there's no action necessary. I just want to share information with you. We alluded to this earlier today during the time that you were considering a budget request. And I wanted to share this information with you about the recent event that took place here in the Laurelak. And also, this was too big for me to print off. By the way, everybody see it in Daily Globe. Anyway, I would like to share that and then I would like to read this, if you will allow me. Ford County Commission, Ford County Administration and Staff, on behalf of the Ford County Historical Society and the members of the Landmark Arts Project, thank you for your time and assistance during the first landmark celebration and art display in the historic Laurelak Hotel, Ford County Government Center. We appreciate your willingness to support the arts along with USD 443 School of History, Sacred Heart School, and the youth in our county. A special thank you to Amy Stryker and Don Larmen for all their help with coordinating the reception in the hotel lobby. Setting up the extra chairs, podium, and speaker system was appreciated. The next landmark to be celebrated is the Boot Hill Distillery, along with the history at the top of the hill. Your continued support for the Landmark Arts Project and the Ford County Historical Society is important to the history of Ford County. Thank you for your time. Sincerely, Ford County Historical Society Board of Directors and the Landmark Arts Project We truly, truly do, and sorry, gentlemen, you all have to share. Okay, anyway, thank you so very, very much.
Thank you.
This will be a annual event. We each claim mark every year and with the artists and students participating. And they were there and they're very happy to have some support of their art programs in the community. And we tied it with history because we feel that we have to get the kids when they're young and they get interested in history, because they need to know why this building's here. They need to know why the others are their landmarks. They need to know the history because that reflects back on Ford County and Dodge City. And you'll be doing this also in Spearville, in Buckland, and Ford for their community and schools, the same pattern we use here in Dodge, when they have their landmarks to recover. So this will be going on for quite a few years. And again, it's to educate people through history and also to use our talent over young people in our county. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Jim.
Thanks, Ken.
Commissioners, I just have a question as far as clarity goes. Since we changed the agenda to the discussion item only, does that mean that you're going to open planning and zoning regulations requirements for discussion among the commissioners or discussion among the public?
For the commissioners. On that deal, that'll be for the commissioners, yes.
Right.
If you got something that you'd like to say, this is your opportunity right now to say it.
All right, I did write a letter as well. So my name's Mark Davidson. I'm with Invenergy. I'm developing the, if you guys could bear with me, too. I think I'm coming out with some allergies here. But yes, so Mark Davidson, I'm a developer with Invenergy, developing the Ford Dodge Solar Project here in the county. And you know, what I'm coming to you today about is the proposed solar and wind ordinances that you guys are correctly deciding on. My colleague who's on the wind side is not here today, but he brought some landowners who might want to discuss too. But yeah, to tell you a little bit about us, Invenergy is a company, we're a developer, owner, and operator of renewable energy projects in, I focus in Kansas, an SVP, but we also have projects all across the United States. We've been developing projects for the last 20 years. And we just recently celebrated our 20th anniversary. We have 30 gigawatts of assets in our portfolios. We're a large independent power producer. But yeah, I, it kind of dropped, we might have dropped the ball as far as, my understanding is how it works is, you know, this was held at the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission already made a favorable recommendation of the county commissioners to approve these ordinances. And so our chances to speak might not have been addressed because we weren't really understanding that there was a solar and wind ordinance that was going to be passed in the county. So I'm here to express, you know, our points of concern as far as the proposed ordinance goes, how this might impact our development. You know, we applaud the county for passing these ordinances. We're not, you know, we're not a stranger to these types of ordinances. We usually work with a lot of the counties to, you know, get something like this into practice, you know? We, we applaud developments and responsible developments. So, you know, when we build these projects, they're, they're large projects that sometimes take five or 10 years to build. And, you know, we, we, this project that I'm working on is pretty early stage right now. We have a lot of land lease. We haven't actually started our studies to understand like all of our environmental setbacks and, you know, characterize the site as far as like the engineering goes. But you know, when we do, we, we come to the county and we come to the public. We, we set up open houses for the public. We set up different types of, you know, landowner dinners so that everybody's on the same page on like what we're doing. And I, you know, I feel like, you know, we're, we're pretty transparent as far as what we're doing. We don't really try to hide it and then build, you know, a project that's going to be here for 20 or 30 years. So, you know, we are here with the community and the county. So I think Ford County is a great place for renewable energy development. These projects are an excellent opportunity to capture community-wide benefits. And I just ask that you table this discussion to be heard at a later date until all parties have expressed their concerns for these changes and proper thought and care has been taken prior to any ordinance being passed. And then I have with me today Mark Fisher, who's a participating landowner for Ford Dodge Solar Project. He would like to speak on this matter as it relates to his private property and his property rights. But I appreciate the time for taking the time to consider this matter and introducing, you know, myself to you all. I'm new to the county. I've been developing some wind and solar projects in central Kansas. So happy to be here and happy to make an appearance and, you know, we look forward to the relationship with Ford County and getting these projects built. So thank you.
Mark, is your name again?
Mark Davidson. So Mark, I was just going to tell you, looking through the room, there's three other people in here that I know that are looking to build solar farms, just so you know you're one of the mix. So this has definitely created some buzz. There's definitely a lot of landowners in here, too, that we recognize that we know would be part of that as well. So one of, one of the things that we are looking at through this process is that it's a fair process, that everybody gets a chance to see it. And I think that's part of the reason why we want to have the discussion, because three of us have not discussed this at all.
Okay.
So we want to make sure that we actually get definitions in place, things, things ahead of time, so it's, it doesn't feel the same as like maybe having an old radio tower and we're trying to make that from like the 1940s, 50s, 70s to today, we're solar training building. So that's kind of the thought process behind that.
Okay.
But that gives you a little bit more.
Yeah, all I'm asking for today is, yeah, just some, I think that we, Invenergy as a whole, you know, our lawyers and our team just kind of noticed that this is happening. So I wanted to make an appearance here since, you know, we do have projects in the county. You know, a lot of other competitors and players are in this county as well. And it seems like you all are, you know, do a lot of renewable energy projects. So just want to have that discussion on how, how we can kind of make this ordinance a favorable ordinance for all parties involved.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ford. Mark, were you up?
Not necessarily. I just, I mean, I guess I was just caught off guard. Well, that, and maybe it was my lack of knowledge, but I, I was told that it was, that we were notified of the paper. And I had never, I read the paper every day, so I must have, I don't know how I missed that, but I know that numerous other landowners had no idea that you guys were even talking about any kind of a solar or wind regulations. So I, I would just encourage you to open that up to the public, to the landowners, so we're all on the same page.
Do they have a copy of the publication?
I don't, I don't know.
I do.
Yeah, when was that? How, how were we notified of that, Missy?
Here is the affidavit to the publication. Says the date, March, March 4th.
Yeah, that, so I'm not, I'm not being critical of this, or I guess I even looked at it.
That's okay.
So, I mean, it, it needs to be, I mean, I think when we're talking about a ordinances that are going to affect all of us for generations to come, that it would be of value for all of us, including you three commissioners, that, that everyone is, that you're very transparent and that everyone knows that there's something going on. Because I, I mean, and I know you guys weren't trying to hide anything, but it just, literally, that's, that is the way it did appear. I mean, I, I, I just, I, I would encourage you to have more, a longer thought process, open to the public so we can talk about what this is. Because I, as I read through, Missy sent me that, which I really appreciate that Friday. She was off and she said, I'll email it to you. So I read through that and I, some of the concerns I had is like, I just, and I know you got, Sean, you and I have talked about this. We don't like to have government overreach. But, you know, in that, in that paper that I read from Melissa, it just, it, it had in there that there needed to be historical, a historical study done, environmental study done, a wildlife study. I mean, those are the three that I remember off the top of my head. Well, the state, the state already does a lot of that, like in the petroleum industry. I mean, that's already covered by the state. Each county doesn't need to do that. There's no reason to have more government overlap. So I, I mean, I just, I think there's some of that stuff in there that is redundant. And I would encourage us to get that cleaned up. And then it had fees in there. Well, don't kid yourself, the fees are going to get passed on to all of us here in Ford County. I mean, I, I already feel, I already feel like I am feed to death and tax to death. So I just, I mean, those are a few of my concerns. Like I said, I'm not, I'm not prepared to speak here, but it just, it is a concern. It is a concern. Yeah, that's it. So whatever we need to do. All right? I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ford. Do we have anybody else for open public comment?
I can speak.
Yeah, please come up here, introduce yourself if you would.
Commissioners, thank you. I'm Bryce Barton. I represent Aluvial Power Project in your county. For the record, B R I C, Barton, B A R T O N. We've been working on a project here for about a year. Appreciate the support we've gotten in the county in the past. We met with, met with the county, met with Mr. Gilbert, a few of the commissioners, and ECO DVO. I've been developing renewables in this area around for 15 years, built a large project down in Menial in Park County. We want to continue the growth of that renewables in, in Kansas. Ford County has been pro renewables in the past and I don't see any reason why that won't continue. These regs are a great framework. Really, really appreciate the time that was put in them. I think what I, we, we are really requesting is a, is a time to opine and, and let it soak in beyond 10:00 a.m. this morning, when we read them, really just help you polish the edges. So that, that's really what we're requesting is there's a few things that, that may be problematic to financing or off-take or, or, you know, again, duplicative things that happen. So if we could, if we could have an opportunity to, to provide comment and shame on us, we're supposed to watch public notice, we're supposed to watch Facebook pages, we, we missed it. I think we all did. And I think that's going to be a tone you're going to hear here. So if the ship has sailed, again, I, I appreciate the time that, that Missy and her staff and the Planning Commission put in, into it and, and appreciate that there are, there are a set of regs that I think are a great, great start. But again, there's a few things that, that it would be helpful if we could opine in. And we're, we're more than happy to provide our staff, our legal staff, though we need more lawyers, but that's, that's who likes to write that. So there's one in the room, I guess. But.
He's used to those kind of comments.
Like the county. So feel free, I can leave our information. I think JD has it. We would be more than happy to, to, again, opine into that, that, that stream of review if, if it's allowed. If not, we appreciate your, your help and appreciate having us in the county and will continue to push the project to, to completion. I think that it's exciting. There's competition in the county and in the room. I think there'll be a lot of projects get built in this county. It's just going to help the numbers that you saw from the, the Visitors Bureau and amazing to see 4,000 people getting on a train here. So with that, I think that's all I have. I, I don't want to get into specifics I can, but I think that's for a later meeting.
Yeah, I don't think that's for you. I appreciate your comments, Bryce. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioners.
That is it. We will close the open public comment. I guess it did produce that makes me have unfinished business and that is the planning and zoning and environmental health agenda item. I would start off with, with a couple of thoughts on this.
I'd like to give you guys just a notification because you did not see the affidavit to show that was. Thanks. To show that it was put on this page.
Number one, I'm extremely pleased to see everybody here. Property rights is, is a big thing. And whenever we start talking about anything that has to do with property rights, we should feel, we should see a room full of people like this. I think that's, I think that's great and I appreciate everybody participating in this. I would like to hear suggestions for how we can improve the notification process in the future so that, so that you get the opportunity to get to that planning and zoning meeting where these things need to have the input from you all in order to, when, when. meeting, where these things need to have the input from you all in order to, when all of that stuff gets fleshed out. And I think the way this will all end up is if we're gonna put, we're gonna get that sent back, I think, to the Planning and Zoning Board, and we'll do that again, where all of that needs to happen, where all of you will have that opportunity to have that input for getting this fleshed out. With regards to the solar project, I'll just say, this is first, this is the first solar farm in Ford County, you know, and we are, we are looking at trying to bring, bring in some common sense regulations regarding that kind of a development, and the fact is, we're novices at it, and we need, we're gonna, we're gonna need that, that input to do this. I guess it's unfortunate that we, that we didn't have the participation in the first notice that there was this going on, but that's really, in order to, in order to honor the process, that's really where that needs to happen, is in the Planning and Zoning Board. This is really an action type of board there, an advisory type board, and that's really where that kind of thing needs to happen. So, I think that's where we're gonna end up probably moving that, is back there, to reopen that part of it, and get that done again. I guess that's, that's all I have on it right now. Gentlemen, do you have any other comments or statements about it?
I think we've definitely been through wind before, I mean, solar's the first time, so, you know, for us, this is, this is us getting a chance to actually look at what a commercial solar energy conservation system looks like, and how we actually take that on paper to make it look like anybody could fit that wants to bring a solar project to Ford County. So, we're wanting, obviously, have the landowners win on things like this, I mean, there's a, there's a big influx of money that they can make when a project like this comes to fruition, and they want, they want to be around your substations, they want that Great Plains Transmission Line to get out of here and get that power sold. So, I think it's important, and I'm excited it's in Ford County. I mean, we've probably seen capitalized on the wind, and now we're gonna capitalize on the sun and the sunny days that we have, so I think this is pretty exciting. But again, it is the first time that we've been walking through this, and that's the process for us, is to see the statements and kind of walk through those pages, and make sure the regulations are there for someone who would apply for conditional use permit.
One other thought that came to me, and Shane shared this with me earlier today, was that this is apparently proposed project is gonna be the largest of this kind of project currently in the state. And I was not aware of that until you told me that this morning, that's something we, I think, I think excited about, proud about. Bryce, when we met here, I forget when it was, it's been a couple months ago, I think, I think you should have gotten from me, I guess, that there were gonna be some kind of zoning considerations to this, I shared with you then, that the only really hiccup, drawback that I would have with the solar project is how it lands with the spirit of what the zoning regulations in our county brought for it to begin, and that was preserving the agricultural aspects and characteristics of our county. And so, I think in that meeting, I hopefully conveyed to you, yeah, there's gonna be some zoning considerations there, so I hope you don't feel blindsided by this, other than that we're still trying to flesh this thing out and get it right.
If I may, for just a couple seconds, we want zoning regs, and it's a set of rules that we all abide by, it's a great thing, and we're excited about our framework, so, yeah.
I don't think that we can have any kind of this development without it being utter chaos, without having something like this in place, so it's just a matter of making sure that we get it right, because it's property, and it's property rights, and we gotta be careful around that.
What about the prairie chicken? I want to know, we just ended the session on prairie chickens. State put a D O R piece about prairie chickens. What about prairie chickens? What about things like that?
I don't think that's gonna be our part to study, because, I mean, that one gets done out of our hands. That should be, I guess, the states does, you know, I don't even know whether the solar has as much to do with that kind of thing as, as say, the wind farms do, I have no idea.
Commissioner Tassit, it does in fact impact it, Shane laws, I just was gonna tell you, as far as the Endangered Species Act, the lesser prairie chicken has been listed as threatened in our area, so any and all development, whether it's a solar, wind, utility, we have to take into consideration where the locations are of lecks, which is the breeding grounds of that bird, and it does in fact impact it. So, yeah, we're fighting that fight on our, on our side anyway, just for the day-to-day business, because, you know, if we interrupt the chicken before 9:00 a.m., we could get, we could get in a lot of trouble. So, we've gotta be, we've gotta be careful with that, but it does in fact impact projects just like this.
On the side, Ford County is number two, Kansas Natural Resources Coalition, and they are actually filing a lawsuit with Pacific Legal Foundation regarding that listing right now, at 9:00 a.m., so, so there's, there's things that are happening on multiple fronts there, but...
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
You bet.
All right.
Well, if I understand why we're, it's gonna go back to planning and zoning, it's gonna go, and we're gonna have another discussion to have planning and zoning, so would that be the next meeting? Or do I make it? I mean, I need to know, I want these people to definitely know when it's going to be.
Well, you gotta...
May 22nd is our next meeting.
Do you have notice time for that?
I, according to Glenn, I don't have to give a notice time, because it's not a public hearing, it is a discussion, because a public hearing has already taken place. I just want to make sure I understand exactly what I'm gonna do.
So, Sean, just for my clarification, you say a public hearing has already taken place, when was that?
That was done March 27.
Planning and zoning.
With the planning and zoning board.
That was the notice that was put in on March 4th.
On March 4th, yeah.
And that was for public comment, obviously, for any of us to come and express concerns or feedback?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so to that point, and pardon my ignorance, because I need to understand the process better, is going forward, if that's already happened, do we have the opportunity to weigh in and offer suggestions or clarification around the regulations that have been drafted to this point? Because as was stated, it's a good framework.
That would be the reason why you would be, we'd do it again, just so you guys would have that opportunity.
So legally, we could do that, though? Okay.
I would say that, yeah, these regulations are in no way set yet.
Okay.
We haven't made any decisions on setting anything yet, and recognizing that we need to have some more input on this, and getting this fleshed out correctly, yeah, I would say that your input is most welcome on this.
We appreciate that, thank you.
And Glenn, one question I had earlier, and I don't know whether we ever found an answer to this or not, but on the notice of meeting that we give for, for the planning and zoning, like, for our meetings, we have a list of folks that have requested to be notified and have correspondence with our agenda and so on. Did we find out that that is something that planning and zoning does or can do?
They can do, they don't right now have a list of people who have requested agendas for their meetings, but they, Melissa and I talked about things, the meetings are made aware of, I mean, it's on, they're the fourth Monday of each month, and they're on the website or anything, Melissa?
Yes, sir.
Or Ford County's website.
Yes, sir.
But I think what maybe everybody's confusing is, by our current zoning regulations, which we've had since 97, if there's going to be a public hearing, you have to give specific notice from the newspaper, and under our current zoning regulations, that's what we're talking about.
Okay.
We don't have to give publication notice for this next meeting, because it's, we've had a public hearing. That doesn't mean that the public can't be heard, it just means that we were trying to comply with the zoning regulations, and we have to be...
Does it mean that we cannot hold another public hearing?
Well, we've held a public hearing, doesn't mean that the public can't be heard.
Yeah, they can all come and speak.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think the angst is, I mean, for instance, if there's gonna be a housing development, or something of that nature, within, I'm not sure what the regulations is, but within a thousand feet or whatever, you guys always send out a certified letter, or a letter anyway, that says, hey, you, we're gonna have a, we're gonna have a planning and zoning meeting, you need to be there if you have any opposition to this. Well, with this, I mean, literally, it just slipped by us, and we didn't see that, so somehow, we need to figure out how there can be better transparency to the public.
Yeah, and that's, that's why I was asking about a notification list or something like that, Mark, so that...
Sure.
It may be an overabundance of information that ends up coming to you. I mean, you'd get noticed, you'd be notified of an agenda for each and every meeting that the Planning and Zoning Commission has, but, but if, I mean, the information would come to you that way, and I...
Yeah.
Just spitballing some ideas here, to try and make sure that we get a better notification process for this kind of thing, so...
I think what would be hard about this is, I mean, you don't know about where the footprint's gonna fall, so you don't know who to notify. I mean, because it's, that's more in the project itself, not necessarily on us. I mean, I couldn't say where these are gonna go, you guys being landowners, first time I've...
This being about regulations, zoning regulations, rather than about a particular project, yeah, that kind of a notification probably wouldn't have gone out.
Right.
So...
I think the only thing that I'd offer to that, Chris, is the fact that, as a local utility, as well as a member owner of Sunflower Electric, who is a transmission owner and provider within the region, we would love to have that notice...
Absolutely.
Just as it pertains to our business and how it could impact us.
Can you give me your contact information, sir?
I sure can.
I appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am.
And I think Ford County wants to make sure that you're able to get that here.
You bet, I recognize that.
We want to be good partners there, you know, and if that, if that helps, Mark, if that helps you, I think we can make that available, and it's helpful to people.
I will make sure I get that in.
She's willing to. Another thing to add, I think in the newspaper, you know, 20-day requirement or whatnot, like that went out just fine, but the newspaper, it outlined, like, wind and solar ordinance, but then, like, in the agenda, like, for here, for instance, for here today, which says planning zoning, Ford County zoning regs, so like, we don't really know what's changing in the zoning regs, because it's not detailed, it's just a little vague, so, you know, maybe next time, it just outlines a little bit of like what's being changed.
In the notice, it was, it was outlined exactly.
Right, right, in the newspaper, it was, it was caught there, but, yeah, we just didn't catch that on our end either, so...
So, this is, this is actually coming back to us under unfinished business, and I know the scope of this is really focused on the solar and the wind changes that are in here, but, you know, we've got several other issues that are talking about some things completely unrelated to, to wind and solar as well, that are in, that are in with these changes and through these zoning regs, some of it's just housekeeping stuff, without cleaning up clerical errors or typos and those kind of things, that should have probably been addressed a long time ago, and thanks to Missy, we've caught up with some of those things that we've gone on for a lot of years and not actually been aware of, but so...
Well, so we send out a notification, I mean, we all get a card in the mail for every parcel of land we have, whenever our taxes are gonna be due.
Yeah.
You know, so that's helpful, see that, and I, and so something like this, that once again is gonna affect multiple generations on down the road, I mean, I don't think we could be, you know, we couldn't be too transparent to make sure that people are aware that something is going to be of significant change. So, you could, you could actually send out a card to every parcel, or I don't know what that would cost, but...
Our mailing costs get pretty significant.
My department doesn't have that budget.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll start talking about that, it's, the cost is a consideration on some of those mailings, Mark, that I mean. We have, Melissa, you got anything else on this?
No, I just want to make sure that if we're going to do it this month, or if I'm going to need to do it next month, I just want to make sure everybody knows when it's going to be.
Okay. I mean, I think it's fresh in everybody's mind, if they, May 22nd?
May 22nd, 7:00 o'clock at night, in the Rose Room in basement of, in this building.
I'd like to see, like...
Do we need to be put on the agenda, or can we just come speak under public comments? If we want to discuss it, how is your meeting?
If you want to, you'll be under comments, you will, we'll just bring it up as a discussion, and it'll be public comments. If there's anything that you guys would like me to send to the zoning board members, I will, I send out a packet...
Ahead of time?
Ahead of time, so they have time to look over everything.
When do you send that out?
I will be sending that out either Friday or Monday.
This Friday?
This Friday or next Monday.
Okay.
But I know, I will take all the information you have, I will be glad to include it.
Thank you, so we have some comments on that, right, so would you just send that to you as a letter or a red line?
Yes, to be quite honest, that's why this was tabled last time, because I got comments from outside entities that wanted to have your opinion, so we tabled it so that we could go through it.
Would that be all red line?
Well, that way, you can see it.
Yeah.
Show you another question.
Yes, my name's Eddie Nichols, I'm just, I'm curious, I, I don't have a ton of knowledge about this, but is it wind and solar, and is this affecting existing projects that are already in the county? Because there's wind in the county, I think, I mean, do they need to be involved?
Right, so I don't think the zoning changes that we're making now are not going to be affecting existing wind projects. We are, we are changing up some things that we ran into some snags with the last, on the last wind project, to make sure we get some clarification in some of those regulations. That, we kind of got upside down with the last wind project that went in, and made kind of a difficult situation, we wanted to clear that up, so that's part of the thing on wind, and we've shared, we've shared some thoughts, and certainly welcome any further, any further input on that, too, but Clay and I have visited a little bit about some things that we feel might be of benefit to change in some of the wind regulations that we have, even some that's been presented so far here, that need to be changed just a little bit. But no, that's, that's for, from here going forward, not, not retroactive.
Well, just for the record, Missy has always been tremendously responsive and helpful with any project we've ever had, so I don't, I don't want her to think we're picking on her at all.
I don't feel that way at all.
Okay, good.
These new regulations, that's exactly, they're really about conditional use permits for new projects, that's what they're geared toward.
Right.
And they don't, they don't say anything about existing projects or making any changes to anything, it's, it's really just, you know, we, when we adopted rest, or the solar regulations in 1997, nobody was thinking about wind power, other than, you know, the fill of a tank in the out of the bathroom. And so, our regulations, you know, really right now, are really more geared towards cellular towers and those kinds of things.
Right.
The whole idea was just to make these more responsive to these projects that we have, but they're all geared towards the conditional use permit to put a new project.
Those that should be, want to be notified when you're doing this, why don't you sign your name, give your address, put them down, and give their, it's a 30 cent dollar.
That would be awesome.
We got a big room full of people here, he's a farmer, he's a farmer, he's a farmer, put your name down, so they can, they can be at the meeting.
Yeah.
That way, she don't have to send out, don't have her property, they can be in Ford County.
Emails prefer.
Yeah. Emails prefer.
All right, any other comments?
Sean, Sean, I've got, well, first of all, I think it's wise, if you're getting ahead of this thing, what's happening, appreciate you guys, you're, you're getting a little insight, you're returning, you're getting the best out of each other, people, appreciate you guys, tabling it, pointing back to zoning, we're doing a little more work, but I know there's been some leases signed already, that don't need some of this work, as far as some of your underground wiring and stuff, and then I think some of these setbacks, again, I don't, I'm not, I'm not a developer by no means, but I just know, I'm glad you're getting on, before we get, get going, so.
Mostly, we just don't want it to turn into chaos.
I agree, we don't want it to go all the way. And to protect the, protect the land.
Yeah. And, and really, the process, the meeting process as well, just.
You cut some ground down there, there's lots of wild trees growing, by the way.
I don't know if I can-
You need to infill that, you know. I know about the wild trees, and I, I come off them all.
Got a lot of wood, you know, where it's at.
I know where it's at.
Chris, John? I got a question for Melissa. Do you think there's time on the May twenty-second to get all this done, with all different entities with their input, or should we have an email comment, um, like an open dialogue before that, so interested parties can give you their ideas? So, you know, just out of, out of respect for the efficiency of time on the twenty-second, is that enough time to address all this stuff in one day?
That, that's a good question. Uh, I truly believe I can do it.
Okay.
Because I can tell you that I've had eight different entities get ahold of me within a week, and I, we, I took the time to go to Glenn, we went over each one. I also took it before the zoning board, again, on the twenty-fourth, every comment that we received, and we went through them.
Okay.
So, yeah, as long as you get the comments to me, or speak at the, at the meeting, we definitely have, we can do that.
And, Sandra, God, I'd encourage you, and encourage everybody to do both, get your comments in, too, so that you can get them to the zoning board ahead of time, but please attend the meeting.
Please.
Yeah, be there in person, be there during, during that, or whatever.
Because I, and that'll give the zoning board two weeks to look over every, all the comments and to form a review, so, yeah.
Anybody else?
Besides the sign.
All right. Thank you, Melissa.
Thank you.
Just a thank you for listening, we appreciate your time.
Thank you, everybody, for coming. Appreciate it. Okay, we have nothing under legal counsel, is that right?
Correct.
Regent's County Administrator Report.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the first four items are for-
County Attorney John Ogilvie.
Mr. Cass, I need you to make, of course, you go on, sit over here, while we sneak out here.
Oh, yeah.
Sorry.
Your down, your down.
We don't want to interrupt you.
Of course, you're all up, if you think you're gonna-
Thank you. Way to go, John. Way to go, John. You can really clear your eyes. I don't know so well, that's probably good.
Get your rep.
Give me a minute.
No, I don't.
Get your emails, then, while you're-
Big one.
There you go.
There you go.
I know you do, and you work there.
You guys wanna go ahead and take it down to the lobby?
All right, John.
Do you have any commissioners?
Try to move through this swiftly, been a long meeting already. First item I had to talk about, related to the one twenty-seven road low water crossing, that project, the bid was important, last time I was here, pretty able, pretty able. They had contracts, just delivered to the county today with the contractor, to get those final signs by the county, contractor lined up ready to go. In order to complete that project as it's designed, we needed a temporary construction easement from the landowner on the left side, so we're having here to consider today as an agreement with the county, between the county and the landowner, to grant that temporary construction easement. Just a couple of quick details about the easement, it's less than one tenth of an acre, so very small area. Really, the reason for needing it is that over the year, on the upstream side, this whole existing low water crossing, silt has deposited into the channel, and so it's built up, well, probably foot and a half deep or so, maybe two feet deep, and so we wanna clean that out, so the water can flow, and then cover with, right now, basically only flowing right without one pipe in that. We're putting in multiple half rubber tankers, kind of larger grade structure, and we get that silt out there, so the water can flow, wider channel through those tankers. The landowner has agreed verbally to donate the use of the property, as part of this, as part of this agreement, then, as part of the project, when construction is completed, the contractor will restore the deserted ground by placing grass seed, cleaning it up, making it look basically-
Was that the word?
Paving it up, maybe getting junked up with powder, and, and construction debris. Um, currently, the landowner has a fence that runs right up to the low water crossing, as part of this agreement, the county would install a four wire fence.
The bike, I cannot hear you.
My apologies. Not on?
It's on. I think the speakers are off, in fact.
I'll try to talk louder. Uh, the county would agree to construct or install a four wire fence, just in the area of construction, not for the entire length of the property, just in the area of construction, uh, because the fence comes right up to the low water crossing, so I'd remove part of the fence to allow for construction of that low water crossing. Uh, so, this agreement is kind of being brought before the commission for your discussion and approval, if you so choose to enter into this agreement, so we can go forward with construction of the full project. We can build low water crossing itself without easement, but to clear out the channel where they're adjacent to the crossing, we would need the easement. Happy to entertain any questions?
I would make a motion to approve signing the one twenty-seven road low water crossing temporary construction easement, as recommended.
I second it.
Motion seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. Second item on the agenda, in relation to the low water crossing we've just discussed, presented an additional services authorization, so Kirk and Michael was under contract with the county to design and bid the project to a contractor, hasn't been completed, this additional services would be, if the county so chooses, to have Kirk and Michael perform certain construction administrative duties during construction of the project, which would include facilitating a pre-construction conference between the contractor and the county, performing up to three site visits during construction to check in on the contractor to see that the project is being built, per the plans and specifications, processing any change orders, reviewing pay requests by the contractor, and then also performing a final walkthrough with the county, and creating a punch list for the contractor, just general cleanup items type things. And we proposed a lump sum amount of twelve thousand dollars to perform those administrative services.
I make a motion to approve adding a part-time engineering services during construction.
I second it.
Motion seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Next, more bridge practices. More bridges, I like the bridges now, we talk about all of them, not today. Uh, so the next item is bridge inspection report, got some handouts for everybody. You. Lot, lot going on. Here's some maps as well, if you'll look at the map, all of you, I got one for each of you. They're pretty big ones. Nope, I can just leave them up here, if you guys wanna roll them out, sure they can. So, brief summary, by federal regulation, the county is required to have their bridges inspected every two years, a minimum, if they're in certain deteriorated conditions, it may be more frequently than that, I think Ford counties are all on a two-year cycle currently. Um, so this is the two-year timeframe to have those inspections completed. Kirk and Michael was contracted by Ford County to complete the inspections, and per the KDOT requirements, we generated this report, which gives, uh, there's a lot of data in there, and for a minute I'm gonna review all of it, but, but I was gonna hit on just a few of the maintenance items, just to give you a quick update, and I don't have the location of all these bridges memorized, so if you wanna see where they're at, we'll have to break out a map. In general, I think Ford County bridges are in pretty good condition, obviously some of the bridges are aging, and we're working on designing plans to replace some of them. Believe it or not, there has been some precipitation over the years, so there's been some water erosion that caused some issues with some of the bridges. For instance, on, I'll look on page sixty of the report, so the maintenance list starts towards the back of the report, but the lower right-hand corner of the report shows the page numbers. There's a column on that page, it's an LPA bridge number, if you look at the off-system bridge locations, number ten, it shows that the stream bed has been scoured by water over time, where the bottom of the sheet piling, this is a vertical metal wall essentially holding back the soil, the bottom of those piles have been exposed, so in order to prevent over time undermining of the sheet pile, the county could need to place soil in there, maybe some rock, stone, or even board of concrete footing, to protect the bottom of the sheet pile. And this is a pretty common occurrence that happens when you get a large rush of water, maybe a very sudden storm with a lot of rainfall, it's happened in Ford County and other structures over the years, but nothing unusual, it's just something that you have to take care of from time to time. A lot of what you're gonna see is, uh, you see a word called drift, that downlogs have been washed up against the bridge, all the structure, needs to be drug out of there. Over time, that builds up, you get a large wa- rush of water, the force can damage the bridge, so we'll have notes in there about removing drift along the channel or along the bridge. On page sixty-two, there's one structure, number fifty-five, LPA bridge, all of the number fifty-five, that wanted the piling on the very outside edge of above the two, again, due to scour erosion of the soil, actually exposed the bottom of the pile, and there's actually like two inches of clearance between the pile and the ground now, so probably four, maybe a concrete cap around that, or at least sort of packs and turn around there so it's, has, has some support. Thankfully, being on the outside edge, if you traffic, it generally drives right on the outside edge of the bridge, so it's not gonna get direct load in.
How much, how much erosion has happened? I mean, how deep was that pile, did you think, construction?
Well, that one is, is probably been like two to three feet of erosion, scoured erosion over the years, same with the first one I talked about, you can see when it was constructed, that kind of the line on the, or stain on the metal pile where it was before, it was cut down several feet.
I'm not exactly sure what kind of pile you're talking about, but-
I think these were generally round pipe pile.
And they were only in a couple of feet?
In some cases, yeah.
That's surprising. When, when we talk about piles, I think about those steam-driven hammers that are driving the things into the ground, you know?
Yeah.
I imagine that they're going all the way down.
In a lot of cases today, and, and a lot of these bridges that we're talking about, were probably built over fifty years ago by county forces, a lot of maybe just had gravity hammer back at the time, and they drove them in where they thought was sufficient, and they made it forty, fifty years, didn't do too bad, I guess. But, in my line of work, I've looked at hundreds, if not thousands, of bridges in my career so far, and you see all kinds of stuff, and sometimes you just go, hm. But in this case, I mean, like I said, it's, it's taken a long time to scour a few feet of soil, so it's, uh, it's done pretty well, all things considered. We don't, I don't know necessarily, some of these piles might have been a kind of an emergency repair thing, maybe why it went so deep, might have been a timber pile before, and blotted out and replaced by, by steel, do that kind of research to see how it got to the place it are. Another one kind of similar, off-system bridge ninety-nine, that was put in bold print in the notes, to indicate it's a more urgent item, it's only one of those in the report, so that's a good thing. Needs a backfill of the piers and the buttness, it's scouring, I think that one actually has kind of a concrete footing in the pier already, but the waters are going around those concrete footings and scouring it out, starting to undermine, there's been several of those in the county, again, those were probably built in the nineteen forties or fifties, and maybe there's just a sudden storm event that pushed a lot of water through that, and scoured it out.
Which one is that?
Ninety-nine.
Should be over in the northeast corners.
That is, yes.
That is almost the northeast corner. Almost, one mile away. I don't know the exact, we can tell by the numbers about where they're at. At Belfond, it was- North and east of Belfond. If there is such a place, right?
Well, there is.
You got a bridge there?
I don't know if anybody beat the drill there.
Yep. The one I was surprised about was the Beaver Dam, that's south of Skirville.
We got a few of those in the county. It's under bridge.
That's sixty-seven. We'll prove that Beaver Dam chain on the other side.
Is that the one, uh, the rest has got the underwater inspection on it, or is that a, I think it's over there?
No, that's the, that one's on Kettle Road.
Twenty-five and Kettle.
Yeah, that's the one that's backing up the water, that makes the one underneath the, had to have the underwater inspection, that's the one we were gonna go, take that Beaver Dam out, but then, with the amount of water that was, we were worried about scouring erosion downstream, for what else it could damage, the amount of water that backed up from that Beaver Dam.
Pass, so, believe it or not, you have a bridge that requires underwater inspection for it. A lot of people probably wouldn't believe that either, they'd go see it for themselves.
We've got some farmers that would've loved to hear that, man, to get a safe, turn the irrigation-
Yeah, put a pump in there, pump it out.
That's right.
Help us out.
So how many bridges are we up to? Hundred and forty.
Hundred and forty?
Hundred and forty. People say this is flat country. Haskell County has three. Is that right?
So that, that brings up a good point, so a lot of people ask, what, what is a bridge? So a bridge is any structure that spans twenty feet or more, and that's not necessarily just one span, but if it's like a three-span structure, that totals twenty feet or more, that's classified as a bridge. It can actually be a series of pipe culverts, but if they're within close enough proximity to each other, they can, a set of pipes can classify as a bridge structure, definition by federal, by the highway. So, let's, we'll touch upon a few of them, if you have any questions, contact Chris or I, but in general, town's structure is in pretty good shape. There aren't a lot of AC structures out there, so there'll be need for repairs and replacements over the years.
I got some more questions.
Okay, in relation to that, off-system bridge ninety-seven, I brought contracts with Elanet Construction, who's a low bid contractor, to be signed by the county today, I brought them today to be signed by the county, so we'll have- There aren't a lot of AC structures out there, so there'll be need for repairs and replacements over the years. Okay, in relation to that, Off-System Bridge Ninety-seven, I brought contracts with Elgin Construction, who's a low bid contractor, to be signed by the county today. I brought them today to be signed by the county. So we'll have that, once that's signed, we'll have the contract in line up ready to go. It's part of the design contract, we've already written in there, to provide part-time inspection for that project, so there's nothing more to do there. On the overlay project, on Jewel Road going through right there, and then on the, the Angle Road going to the west of right. APAC was a little bitter, he said they were gonna file their bonds today, and get us those contracts back this week, so those should come into the county here in the near future.
So another box of stuff, the same?
Another box of stuff, smaller boxes, I don't know. That box has two projects, and it's supposed to get one. Next item I wanted to discuss was the Jewel Road Reclamation Project, that was completed in twenty-twenty-one. Been discussing this for a while, obviously twenty-twenty-one, about the premature cracking that's starting to show in the asphalt surfacing on that project. We sent a directive to APAC of what we wanted to see done, for some of the areas that were deficient in asphalt thickness. We recommended placing asphalt overlay on top of those to bring them up to the thickness, and put a seal over top of the rest of the project to seal those cracks. They had counter proposed to just seal the cracks themselves with, or melt the tar rubber, crack sealing, if you will. And they said they would offer to do the overlays if the county would pay for the materials. APAC would provide the equipment and manpower to do that. What Chris and I have been discussing, and would like to take back to APAC, for our counter, is to, we really don't feel like crack sealing is gonna do a whole lot of good, and there's a lot of cracks, so it's, it's gonna be, I don't know if they realize how much effort that's gonna take, but it's gonna make the road look ugly, in my opinion, and you're gonna notice it when you drive it. Tack your tires going over all those. So we're really not excited about doing a crack sealing. Really, same sealing or chip sealing of some form is the way to go, where you're spraying the tire root surface down. In doing that, it's gonna add some thickness and structure with that oil on there. We're also a little concerned with, you try to overlay just small segments, you're gonna end up with, huh, it's gonna take away from some of the reliability of roads. Because the whole reason for doing was brought in, really. So we wanted to run by the commissioners, going back with APAC, as a pusher for a final decision to just go with the seal. Forget about the overlays, we'll get the additional structure, at least some of them with the sealing, you know, seal the entirety of the project.
So how would you suggest the seal happens?
With APAC, to doing it at their cost. That would seal all the cracks, and they can all look beautiful, and ride better than a crack sealed. We're not really seeing any asphalt breakage.
Considerably.
It's not potholing, it's not falling apart. So the structure's seeing pretty sound. With doing that, I think it'd be reasonable, ask for maybe a longer dated warranty on the project as well. By contract, it's, they have to provide one year of warranty against workmanship issues. That's what we're discussing. So that's what we're discussing today, if the commissioners are comfortable with us going forward with that proposal, to seal a project at APAC's expense and presenting it or requesting it instead of warranty.
Would Terracotta and part of this discussion about this, if there are any viability on their part about this?
So what Terracotta did, they took it upon themselves to go out and take cores of the asphalt that's in place, as well as the underlying sedimentary base. They sent that into a lab in North Carolina, if I remember right. Person that runs the company there, basically wrote the specifications for super paved asphalt in the county, so he's considered a national expert. They did an in-depth analysis of the asphalt pavement, as well as the base. So the base was sound, and they didn't notice any structural deficiencies in the base. The one thing they noticed in the asphalt is that it appears like, based on the cracking, appears that it was over rolled. Putting down too thin with some asphalt, maybe the way it was specified. It's easy to overroll it, and so when you're compacting asphalt, it'll go back and forth with a big steel drum roller. And what you do is you take density measurements, and the density keeps going higher until a certain point, that actually goes down. And that's called breakover, and at that point, you want to not roll it anymore, you want to roll it to the maximum number and then stop. When we reach to max density, so it appears that they, that it was over rolled, and that's what made it actually loosen up, and was allowing to start to come apart in the cracks.
So, in relation to you can get that figured out, that's what I plan.
So that's what we're, feel like for four counties, at this point, it's probably on the contractor, that's the rim of his situation. But we wanted to make sure that you all felt comfortable moving forward with that, before we...
I think that's, they probably took out bond on themselves as well.
Yeah, that's a bonded project, yeah.
It's, they should be doing it right.
John, do you have any influence with this? I'm asking your question, do you have any influence?
I do have some influence with the state on certain subjects.
Have you ever, ever go over the rural tracks? Down like that, down to, down to four hundred, I go four hundred, and see those big holes? Be brrr 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 brrr.
Talking East of that city, is that what we're talking about?
We're talking about the old past, the rural tracks.
Overpass, oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, the overpass.
You, you got any, you got any influence?
No, I wouldn't actually talk about that here just a little bit, but...
You gonna talk about it?
Not necessarily.
I can talk to my kid about it, too, saying, okay, that's busted, I want, I want my action.
So, I'll, I'll approach that just briefly now. KDOT, in the ICH program, has gone to local, go out and doing local consult solicitations every two years. This is the second year, and we're expecting KDOT, I don't know where they're gonna be, if they'll be in about a city or Garden City or Little. They'll come out to District Six in September, October. And that's the time where we need to get locals to come out there, it's open and public.
Have you ever, have you ever seen a sheriff pursuing something down there with a car deal, when he come over there? It is unbelievable how, how bad it's turned up in vehicles when they get them up.
That's right.
I mean, though, it's, it's like this, whoa, whoa. I mean, if you got any influence, it's not you.
Well, that's where this meeting coming up in, in the fall will be the time and place.
Well, by this fall, he won't have any, not eleven-hundred of his cars, because it's not terrible.
So I, this is my opinion, the life of officials probably have more influence than I do, you know, so...
I don't think so, so, I don't think they deal with it, and one, well, I'll tell you. First of all, that's terrible. All them semis come over there, it's terrible.
I completely agree with you. Gotta keep beating the drum, and like, they contact Garden City, which is one of the district offices, and they can contact the secretary as well in Topeka.
I got two colleagues here that think that something happened against Garden City, because they got more influence than we do.
Garden City does the good.
That's my two, two colleagues.
They do.
I guarantee you, if that was Garden City, the hell would free going, before that clown got, got, maybe go up there. It's terrible.
Well, we have talked to the district office about it.
Give me their notes, I'll call about it.
If you have to do that.
No, we'll try.
I don't know why, August, September, I don't care, it's, it's too late. I mean, Rob and I have equipment, you, the taxpayers, have heavy equipment running up and down that overpass. You know, it's ridiculous, the blowouts on that, I don't know what it takes, but if what John's saying, with the county, with the commissioners, take a solid stance on this, draft something, maybe have GIS go out and take photos of all the potholes, the blowouts on the overpass, and send it to KDOT. You know, I, I am truly unconcerned about our emergency responders, the ambulances, Rob's crews running out to the fort, everywhere else, fire trucks. I don't think we can afford to wait any longer, I don't know what the holdup is. Anybody, you can go out there, you can sit and watch, you'll see traffic going on the on, on public lanes to circumvent. If you're headed south, they're either taking the shoulder, or they're taking the up. I mean, and if you're coming up, you'll see people zigzagging amidst the potholes. It's just absolutely getting dangerous. So I don't know what we need to do, I don't know if the city's part of it, I don't know who's responsible for that section.
I think the city is part of it, because it's just like, when the highway runs through the city limits, it's part of what they call the city connecting lane. So the city has to put money in to get it fixed, so the city would have to have some skin in the game, too.
But as, as a first responder, as a sheriff, it's a safety issue. We're beyond the point of sitting here, I agree with Commissioner Stuck, just talking about it's not doing it. So I don't know what we need to do, but it's definitely not getting any better. Commissioner Tasset, even you've mentioned it, you know, anybody that drives that road day in, day out, it's not good. But, you know, we sit and talk about it, I haven't seen or heard anybody doing anything about it, though, from the state's standpoint, so...
I think what you proposed would be beneficial to get some real documentation, and at this point, I'd say send it up to the secretary's office in Topeka.
You know, my, my sheriff John, a little bit ago, I called it a dispatch the other day, twenty-four grand, because there was a blowout. Dispatch contacted KDOT, they came out and patched a small hole, and didn't touch the other ones near it. But, you know, apparently they had a shovel to fill one hole. So, we could, KDOT.
Sure.
Or at least that's who I suspect, that's who I had dispatch contact.
How many, how many semis you supposed to go through that road every day?
No clue. Hundreds, I guess.
I can tell, I can tell you right now, it is, I'm going, and I shouldn't have brought it up to you, but I might be having on it.
In some way, popping on a map regarding it, unfortunately.
Before we get too far out of the line, we've got something that we need to address on...
Jewel Road.
See, I forgot what we were talking about.
We were talking about approaching the contractor, final offer to seal the entire length of the project. And then, oh, the...
Like state of warranty.
Does that, just make sure the commissioners are comfortable with that?
Need an action on that, or?
I don't know if we need an action, maybe you, more of a, you know, that full action, but, I'm getting a yes over here.
I would make a motion that we authorize John Hobbie Walks and Goon Bridge Superintendent Neil to go to APAC with the children sealed and extend it to the warranty.
I'll second that.
Motion seconded, further discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much.
Do we need a motion to make a video of all the trucks and cars that crashed through our potholes?
No, we can take care of that.
Host that courtesy of Kansas Department of Transportation.
Okay, I mean, I could assist.
But we will come back and ask you to probably draft some sort of document, like we were talking about, some sort of sign work to bring back to you guys here.
Yeah, if you're gonna have commissioners sign and support it. And like, say, you know, more than a two, I think you better yet, come, come at it together.
I'm surprised we don't hear more from the city about this. I think it's a terrible image to come into town and drive across them.
Well, it's, it doesn't fall within the footprint of the county, it falls within the footprint of the city of KDOT, where we have county and KDOT in different, different areas. We started preparing it on our own.
Yes, but it doesn't fall within the footprint of the county, because the sheriff comes over that deal, and then emergency pickles go out to car deal, they're have to run like a son of a gun to get out there, get those people, get hurt. And this bunch of, it's our problem, as well as the city.
The reason, the reason why I'm saying that is, the city's probably the one that's going to not bring us into the discussion, because they're just gonna handle it with KDOT. But it'd be nice if we actually just said, hey, we drafted this, we signed this.
While you're getting on their tail end, gets on their tail end about all these damn streets. While this going on, courthouse, post office, bank, police station, government building. While you're, while you're gnawing on a deal, you're putting this deal. This is garbage, is what it is. We're up here worrying about a solar bar for two hours, or three hours, whatever it was, worrying about solar. And I know for a fact that we got a notice about the prairie chickens, I noted a bit of that, and worried about the prairie chickens. Seen a guy over here bought a bunch of land down next to my dad's, and they got a whole social wild turkey down there, and I guarantee you, they'll be getting one more in that. These things like that, you can get addressed. And so does that damn road.
Are we completing?
Well, you agree with it now, because I don't care a bitch about it. If I thought I could do anything, I would do it, but I can't do it.
We'll do our best to get some action going.
John, do you have anything else for us today?
No, just a couple of quick items. We have, we have two bridges that we're designing, replacing structures, Off-System Fifty and One-O-One. And we've got preliminary plans completed, Chris and I went and did a field review of those preliminary plans on the site. We're gonna be moving forward to final design. Utility relocation right away, because we're not, by the timber heathens for the construction, and getting permits, and then we are gonna resubmit those for the local bridge improvement program funding with KDOT, and that's our application due May twenty-sixth. And APAC for four county have their awarded funds, they can get eighty-five percent funds from, from the state for the cost of construction of those two bridges. The final item, I had KDOT contacted me as the county engineer a couple of weeks ago, that they are initiating a study to improve Highway Fifty from Avenue P to the east, we talked about this in meetings prior. They were just reaching out to me and seeking for some preliminary information, probably more really to get some contacts, local contacts, to learn about future development, and where future traffic might be generated from. So I did share with them some names. City, city manager, engineering director, people with road bridge zoning here in the county, and whatnot, that'll be in the know, future development, at least that's going on currently.
So, so you said that location again Avenue P, like Wyatt Earp going out?
No, this would be Highway Fifty on the north side of town.
Bypass.
Yeah. So, yeah, the north bypass. From Avenue P there going east, past two eighty-three highway, just out by Beauties Corner, on east there. So I did conclude in there that there's been ongoing concern with Beauties Corner, with safety, and a number of accidents, so I asked him to very specifically look at that intersection. Expressed that the county would really like to see if there's, let's say, a four-lane highway that'd go on east through right. It's been also brought up with those folks, and they're in design, so they may not be able to do a whole lot of there either, but the concerns about the highways, this isn't part of your project area, but going across the overpass there, south from, down from Trail Street up to the KDOT office there, Flying J, as well as Highway Fifty-six slash two eighty-three, going from the Flying J, KDOT office going east, and the airport. Payment conditions is continuing to deteriorate.
Also, at the bottom of that, down at that intersection at the bottom, going east on four hundred, John?
Yeah.
That's, that whole deal right there, it's a crap.
Chris, is this county, or the state's doing an overlay, is that right?
APAC started that overlay on the four hundred, they didn't finish it last year, they're supposed to start back up.
Today.
From what I've seen, they are supposed to come all the way up to where the concrete starts at that intersection.
And that is really where the bad part of that is. And, and that is really where the bad part of that is.
That join interface.
And they'll come, uh, join up with the, with the concrete. And it's where you drop off that concrete on the asphalt is where it's called to rush.
Or jump onto the concrete off of the asphalt.
Yeah.
It's a leak. So we anticipate that project when it gets to that point that provides some improvement at that point. That's what, that's the conclusion of my report for today.
Well, fantastic.
Glad I can make somebody happy by someone.
Can you get us on our.
I will do that. I appreciate it. And then reciprocate.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Next item is for Timmy West.
Boy, that was bad luck getting put on the end of this.
I was just saying the same thing. Got a couple of rowers.
It was kind of entertaining. I mean, and, and I learned some things, you know. Uh, I'm Timmy West. I'm the director for the Crisis Center by the city and we serve victims of domestic violence and sexual assault. And, um, last year we provided safe shelter for thirty eight families and fourteen kids. And, uh, so here, today, I'm here to request if you guys would consider to be our sub recipient for the emergency solutions grant. And we're requesting thirty four thousand nine hundred seventy three dollars. And if you have any questions, we'd love to answer those.
Thirty four thousand what?
Nine hundred seventy.
My son would tell me this is spending thirty five.
Yeah, it's kind of like car sales, you know, if they put it at ninety nine something, maybe we'll actually give the grant. So we're hoping. You guys have been the sub recipient. Uh, we started back in two thousand eleven. So, and we greatly appreciate it because we wouldn't be able to provide shelter without.
Timmy, you've been the director there for a while.
Uh, yes, for almost nine years.
Are you the reporter?
Yeah.
Talk about that road. Light that up and put my name down. I don't care. That's a bunch of garbage.
I think, I think the quote was crap.
Terrible, terrible. Put my name down.
It's hard to make interesting reading, yes.
Well, I'm sure it will. You could use curse word to be alive.
So since we're on this market, can you give your contact estimation?
Sheriff.
Sheriff, let's, let's get back to the meeting here, little first, please.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the twenty twenty three emergency solutions grants for the crisis center.
I second. Motion seconded, any further discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next one is for the snap. Hi, David.
Thank you for your patience.
Yes.
That's okay. I always feel like I'm in these meetings, I learn a lot, so I, I've got a lot of things, so. But anyway, um, we are also applying for our solutions grant. And, uh, for several years have been part. We've been part of the, the grant, um, that, uh, we did with the crisis center and the county was a sub recipient. Last year, the Kansas Housing Rescue Corporation asked us to separate out of that because we were applying for funding with multiple counties and let us and to ask us to be the sub recipient for multiple counties and communities. And they allow us to use that funding now instead of individual counties, pockets of counties to all of the southwest Kansas, the twenty eight counties that we serve. And so that means that we still need to have the approval of a government entity. And so we're asking you all to approve that since our corporate office is here in Fort County. And then that allows us to search, to use that money throughout that area. And we're asking for eighty eight thousand dollars to serve, um, the twenty eight counties of southwest Kansas. And then we will match that at eighty eight thousand as well. So the hundred seventy six thousand dollars that are split on homelessness. Uh, people, to get them out of homelessness and then also to prevent homelessness. And that's one of the great things about this grant is that we've been able to use it for homeless prevention dollars when we do short term rental assistance, utilities, since assistance. We can even pay for some of their, um, arrears, their old utility bills, that what they're behind in their rent so that they don't become homeless. And what we know that if people become homeless in frontier counties, they're more likely to come to the larger communities because there's more resources and that just burdens the larger communities. We can keep them home and in their homes, in the counties that they live in, that's much better for everybody, especially them, so.
I make a motion to approve the twenty twenty three emergency solutions grant service agreement. Chair, this is southwest Kansas.
I second it.
Motion seconded, any further discussion? David, I was reading a news story, actually, I think this was, this was talking particularly about homeless in California. San Diego's or Los Angeles. San Francisco's. The thought that the homeless situation they have out there is much more a product of mental illness and substance abuse addiction than it is of lack of housing. Is that anything that you see a similarity to here?
Well. I think it, I think it's a product of both. We have a housing shortage in southwest Kansas, of Fort County, plenty of county. Uh, we can't find affordable housing for people at the rates that that allows us to pay for our newly arriving refugees. Um, you know, landlords can be very picky about who they rent to. And so it's becoming a real challenge for us to find affordable decent housing in our communities. Um, there is certainly a serious issue of undiagnosed untreated mental health disorders and substance use disorders with people who are homeless. Um, you know, I advocate all the time for Medicaid expansion because those are people that would get treatment. They would have insurance that would cover their treatment. It would cover their, um, you know, their diagnosis, they're going to help diagnosis, help them get treatment for that. Right now, they don't have any way to pay for that. Nobody will accept them into a program because they're not going to get paid. And so that's something that would make a big difference. And I know that's a very controversial thing in the state of Kansas. And there's no hope at this point that that's going to happen. Um, but I think forty, oh, fifty states have expanded Medicaid and that's an opportunity to make a difference. We're very, very fortunate in Fort County because we have this support from law enforcement, both county and city. Um, they don't want to see homeless people either. They call us when they, uh, need help. They participate in, um, the things that we do to try to alleviate homelessness as much as we can. We don't have the kind of encampments that you see other places, but that does not mean we don't have people living on the streets. And I'm sure Sheriff Carr could, could tell you that. They just are not in big groups like we see in larger metropolitan areas.
You know, I'm starting to see that trend again out from those metropolitan areas that, you know, didn't have that kind of an element before.
It's, it's everywhere. I've never, you know, I mean, I've been doing this for thirty years and I've never seen the issues with homelessness that we have now. Um, but we maintain as a provider that it's a lack of affordable, um, appropriate housing. And, um, you know, I know that Judge Stein is very concerned about people that are, um, you know, he's sitting in his courtroom that there's no place to send them. You know, once they're, you know, if they have a drug issue and they're prosecuted for it and they, you know, there's no place to send them back to their friends that are all doing drugs with them. We need to have something that saves, secure. One of the things that we really don't have, um, in southwest Kansas is what they call permanent supportive housing. So if you have some level of disability, it could be a drug addiction, it could be mental health disorder, so they get specialized services that, rapid services that come with that housing. Um, you know, vouchers, so to speak, that would help with this a lot. Um, but, you know, that takes money and it takes organizations that are willing to do that, so. Um, but that would, I think, help alleviate, uh, some of this. But, you know, I have staff that work with those. Uh, we do rapid housing. Rapid housing is not appropriate for the folks that you're talking about. Um, but we serve them because there's no place else for them to go. We have to manage our case lift a little bit. And our case manager do a terrific job of trying, of working to help them keep that, you know, that housing permanent for them. But it's a challenge. It is a challenge for them. And I have a son that has a mental health disorder and it is really a lot of work to keep him, you know, living. You know, and having that, and being able to manage life. And if you don't have somebody that can help do that, then they don't have much, much opportunity to do other than living encampments with people who share their life experiences.
All right, John, we have a motion on the table. Any further discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. I always appreciate your all's support. Thank you.
I couldn't hear whether you should be higher.
I say yes.
Okay. Make it three eyes.
Next item is for, for the person to sign the channel plus three days.
Okay, so I'm just coming before you today to request permission to see bids on the vehicle purchase for our agency.
Make a motion to approve Santa Fe Trail Community Depression, screwing up bids on vehicles.
I second, ma'am.
Motion seconded, any further discussion?
What do you, are you replacing anything or just getting new?
We have, uh, an SUV, it's about ten years old now, and, and so we're just looking to replace that with a similar smaller size SUV.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Amy. Thanks for your patience.
Yeah.
Hold on, through your hat and stuff. He added one, did we? He's, he's an item for Chief Officer.
Hi, guys.
Chief for your patients.
Chief Officer.
That's his official title.
Uh, last week, uh, we had an ambulance that spun the front bearing, blew the motor. Uh, it's the only V ten that we've ever had to have, uh, back in two thousand seventeen. That was our only option other than a five point seven. We just didn't figure like that was enough, so everybody was going to the V tens. It is scheduled to be replaced this year. So the good news is, well, you know, the good news for that. The bad news is it was thirteen thousand dollars to replace this motor. I think that's throwing good money after bad since it's already scheduled to be replaced. When those trucks get, uh, refurbished, they only allow us two thousand dollars for the chassis. Because they're shot. I mean, they get them, they're shot. So what I'm asking for is to increase the price of the remount by two thousand dollars. We'll tow it back to Missouri and wash our hands of it rather than putting a new motor in. That may or may not be better. Once they start tearing into all those components with all the electrical systems, I think we're going to be in for trouble. My recommendation is to pay the extra two thousand dollars for the price of the remount and get it out of here.
Chief, what can you run through the price of the remount real good for me so you refresh that? I know you're going to just, just thanks.
Uh, I think that was, I think at the beginning here, we asked for a remount. It was around a hundred and thirty five thousand. That money was coming out very quickly reserved since we didn't budget, uh, for that, uh, middle letting to it. That's what we should just do this year. And there's plenty of money in there to do that. I believe it was a hundred and thirty five thousand to have the remount done. So.
And you were planning on this vehicle.
Yeah.
Like getting changed out this year. So there's a budget for this vehicle already?
Yeah, we've already budgeted for this vehicle to have a remount. The only difference is the balance they gave us in that amount was two thousand dollars for the chassis. So essentially we lose that two thousand dollars, which takes the remount to, to go up to a hundred and thirty seven.
Yeah. Now, is this where you save the back of the box off the, you put on the chassis?
Save the box. They refurbished the whole box, new floors, seats, everything, like all of that.
So first.
What is the new chassis?
It is a four, uh, E four fifty with a seven point three gas. We started building those, uh, three years ago and we just got seven point.
That's a B with a couple of V tens.
So what we have now, it blew up this weekend.
Seven point three still. I think those were called the consol, or the consolas?
Oh, yeah, way more poor than that.
Really?
Okay, can you remind us what the good part was?
Well, for an extra two thousand.
Oh, that was, okay.
Yeah, I think we've already.
It was hard to pull it out.
Yeah, well.
The good, the good part was it didn't happen coming across the bridge.
We did not have a patient in there. Looks like we get that.
Yeah.
Apparently you have been over that bridge.
Yeah. I have. Not an ambulance, but I have.
I would tell you what, just come up, come up and see, get some of his awareness over that field. And you'll be really thank, thank God for them brought it up because they're flying.
All right, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, we need a motion on that.
Yeah.
I make a motion to approve, I don't know what vehicle is, but it's a.
It's basically in addition to the cost of the remount.
Two thousand dollar addition to the cost of the remount. So how would, how would? You're going twice to do this?
No, this is O C G.
O C G, okay. So make a mo.
I'm sorry, there, there, that part of it's already been approved, right? We've already approved the remount.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, just change it.
So we just need to change.
About two thousand. I got you. I make a motion to change the price.
I second.
Motion seconded, any further discussion?
Just, just so we're clear, Dylan, there's going to be a little more expense as far as getting that truck back to
here.
Missouri. Uh, but there is a company out of Waukegan that I know was going down to that plant and about two weeks to pick that old chassis up. So we're working with them to
Give it back.
Get it back going down.
This is with the F B. Okay, uh, any further discussion?
Do you need that dollar amount changed?
Two thousand is good.
They told me two thousand on the phone today, so.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Upcoming meetings, we have the community facilities advisory board, that'll be May third, that's Wednesday, six thirty. New Kansas County Highway Association annual spring contract. That'll be.
People in Manhattan.
Manhattan. Sure, it's a hotel, that'll be Wednesday, May fifteen through seventeen, or Monday through Wednesday, May fifteen through seventeen. Everybody's favorite meeting is open enrollment, May seventeen through eighteen, April four at the expo. We have a special pleasure work session. May twenty third, starting at nine AM. The Kansas following deadline primary election, Thursday through first. I wanted to say thank you to Amy, I know she walked out, but that's me, that serves a special day, so. Without her, these agendas would go out. She's in front of us a lot, putting information together, taking calls and text messages and emails. Late calls and text messages and emails. Working on something to be in with me and she, she doesn't ever complain. So I just wanted to say thank you to her, making sure she's up. Dylan, watch the meeting later. That's all I have for that.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion for the chair.
I second.
Motion seconded. All is in favor? All is in favor?
Aye.